I just remember that one guy, because you were town manager at the time, and I remember it was when they were swapping around the jobs that I made. But I came from running the town council.
I want to tell you.
I want to go out there, I want to do the church.
Definitely.
I'm going this weekend. I'm going to go next, uh, Tater Creek.
He's calling.
Second highest paid guy in the way. The highest he's got down.
He'll see this afternoon. All of these.
Yeah.
He was in Sherrville, coming home at thirty.
So whatever girls want to change, they want to challenge even distribution.
He's pretty good. Thank you.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
I don't have any utilities. I don't have any utilities out there, man.
What is there?
Jean and I don't have any utilities down there.
You know, I think we can, I think we can use some of the Maryville Tiff money for that.
There you go.
There you go. Absolutely. Hey, how are you?
Oh, right. I got some juice on me.
I hope you can hurt that.
Town council, uh, meeting is called to order at six thirty-five. Please rise for the invocation by Pastor Roger Willis from Unity Free Methodist Church, and also please, uh, for a moment of silence for the former mayor of Gary Rudy Clay. Moment of silence, please.
Father, we honor those who have served before us, like Mayor Clay. We honor those here who serve us as our representatives in this town. I pray, Lord, that you will guide us and help us in everything that we do. We thank you for your grace and our opportunities and our freedom. Help us to take the tasks ahead of us seriously and ourselves lightly. May we walk before you with love and dedication to the task of which you have called us. We bring ourselves, our town, our state and nation to you, and we pray that your will be done in those entities. Lord, we trust you to do as you promised when you said you would supply all our needs, because everything is yours and your bounty is limitless. Your by, your word says we live and move and have our being in you. Lord, make us mindful of that task, that we walk with you and for you. Bless this council, our town and our nation, our state, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Gurnsey.
Span?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Here.
Barron?
Present.
Pettit?
Here.
Miano?
Here. Petitions, communications and remonstrations, a proclamation celebrating one-hundredth anniversary of the old Lincoln Highway. Whereas, the Lincoln Highway was America's first transcontinental highway planned in nineteen thirteen, and whereas, on July first, nineteen thirteen, a group of businessmen founded the Lincoln Highway Association. They envisioned a continuous improved highway from the Atlantic to the Pacific, open to lawful travel of all descriptions without toll charges, and whereas, the original nineteen thirteen route roughly followed what was part of the Great Sock Trail used by American Indians and early pioneers, and whereas, during the nineteen thirties, much of the nineteen thirteen Lincoln Highway route was cut off when today's busy U.S. Highway Thirty was constructed. Whereas, today, the original nineteen thirteen Lincoln Highway is known as Seventy-third Avenue. Now therefore, I, Carol Miano, President of the Maryville Town Council, extend my sincere congratulations on the one-hundredth year anniversary.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We have a large gathering permit for the Polish-American Twenty-Sixth, um, annual pilgrimage, um, a location at fifty-seven fifty-five Pennsylvania Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Consent agenda, accounts payable registered voucher approval June twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen, and also approval of the town council minutes of June eleventh, twenty thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, under budget and finance, um, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with the bond. Uh, it's approximately going to be, uh, one point eight million dollars, uh, with the proceeds, uh, for paving this year, so that's my motion to go ahead and move forward with the bond.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Any question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, uh, six to zero, I'm sorry. Anything else on the budget and finance?
Uh, no, Madam Chairman.
Public works, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, on the heels of that, Madam President, we still need to, uh, pick the roads. So, once again and officially, now that Bruce is back, I'm going to schedule a public works meeting, um, for, uh, Bruce, when do we need to get this done? I mean, we're already to the end of June, guys, and, and nobody's got, unfortunately, I'm the only one that's got anything going right now, and, uh, I don't want to see you guys lapse behind where we're into September, October, November and December, and we're paving late.
We've got, we've got, um, a couple wards that have already, uh, Mississippi Street off of Fifty-third, we've talked about, uh, Carol Tyler Street, uh, that goes south off of Thirty.
Right, there's several of them, yes.
Okay, that, that road has, is in dire need of being repaved.
You said Mrs. Barron's given you a list, right? That'll be Maryville Road Tiff.
She's given me a list, and I've marked some roads that's going to come out of Maryville. So I'm getting the roads marked that are coming out of the Tiff Districts, because we can pay for those.
All right, why don't we do it before the next council meeting, then? Five o'clock.
Everybody could give me.
Five o'clock on the, on the ninth.
But if we could expand the Maryville Tiff District again to cover Westwood, that would cover more, more roads to be out of the Maryville Road Tiff District that would not have to be taken from the bond.
That's, yeah, but that's also time-consuming, and I don't know if we, that's something that we could achieve before, uh, yeah.
Let's get together tomorrow, Bruce, sometime. Give me a call whenever you, whenever you got some free time.
All right.
I know you don't have a lot of free time, but if you got some, give me a call, we'll write.
Okay.
I got a couple streets in mind.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else other than public works?
Uh, yeah, Madam Pres, let's, let's make it for the ninth, Bruce, at five o'clock. Public works meeting for paving. And everybody, but by then, we need the, the list, we'll finalize the list on the ninth. We'll double-check the dollar amounts and the funding sources, whether it be any of the Tiff Districts or the bond issue, and see what, you know, uh, as I stated two weeks ago, Madam President, I don't feel in Ward Six right now I need anything out of the bond issue. Mine will come from other sources.
Very good. Okay, council affairs, Councilman Span?
No report.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
I, I got two things under that. I don't know if how it work, if it falls on the public works or what, but I got a, I received a phone call from a guy yesterday that, uh, he had had some Indiana-American water work done probably three or four years ago, and every time he came down here to try to get some help, nobody helped him. And I just want to say that we are, all of us, does, everybody sitting up here and everybody that works for the town are paid for by taxpayer dollars, and nobody should ever have to call a councilman and say that I was treated rudely in Town America. And this is like, this is not the first time that I've received a phone call, but I'm fed up with it. And it's just like, uh, I talked to a lady about ours, about the storage over on Sixty-first Avenue, and she was told that I was the difficult person to work with and that I was very aggravated and agitated. And I am a difficult person when people lie on me, and the next time that I get a phone call of any sorts, I'll be coming to you for a, uh, personnel meeting, because our employees should treat everybody in the town of Maryville with respect and dignity at all times, regardless of how, what they say to them or how they say it. And I'm fed up with it, I'm tired of hearing people come to me complaining about how they're treated when they come into this building. It's going to stop.
You know, Councilman, um, not only have I heard the same thing that you have reported to me, it is also what they perceive on the other end of the phone with rudeness and sarcasm and, uh, things of that nature.
Well, I'm.
We have to, we have to remind the employees, excuse me, we have to remind them.
Well, I'm going to this council to stop it, because it's, we don't, we can stop it.
All I could say is.
Madam President, might I suggest through, uh, Mr. Garalcheck, and I think there's other issues, uh, obviously, we don't want to air on the floor.
Oh, we're not going.
I would, I would recommend strongly that we have a two-hour personnel and employee benefits executive session. Their personnel matters, Mr. Castleton, I think they're under the guidance of the executive session. The seven of us need to sit down and go through some stuff on the personnel side, and, and I would strongly recommend an executive session for two hours, either after the next council meeting or sometime in the very, very, very near future. And I've spoken with Mrs. Miano, the President, about the one that I've got in particular that I'm going to bring out, and it ain't going to be pretty.
No, it's not.
So.
But it needs to be said.
I would strongly suggest we consider that.
And you know what else? I'd like to make one recommendation. We're not going to air dirty laundry.
No.
But whenever one of us gets a phone call from someone, let's get the person's name. I mean, not the person calling, the one that says like with Mr. Hardaway, he's difficult to work for. Who's telling this person this? Get the information.
Well, I don't want to call Nate, I don't, I know who did it, but I don't want to.
No, we're not going to talk about who did it or whatever.
Go through that.
But any phone calls.
Right.
Get as much information as possible, because we, we cannot run as a council on pure hearsay.
Well, no, this is not hearsay. This is, but I just, I just, I agree with Sean, and I think the sooner the better, because we have let this thing go far too long, and it's kind of like an epidemic. The longer we let it go, the more people going to get killed in the process with the illness.
Right, right. Okay, very good. Okay, anything else on the.
Whenever you come up with something there, uh, Mr. Garalcheck.
Sure, I'll, uh, schedule a meeting.
All right. Anything else on the personnel policy, employee benefits?
No.
Public safety? Anyone under public safety?
Uh, just real quick, Madam President, and this kind of falls back under my public works committee, and I spoke with Chief Petrusch about this before. Bruce, you know, when we're having these power outages and these state signals go down and they gridlock our town, something needs to be done with NDOT. This is, this is ridiculous, you know? Thirty and Broadway is backed up, I almost got into an accident coming down here from work at Sixty-first and Broadway. If NDOT's not going to maintain their signals, you know, we, we got problems. He's going to end up with accidents all over the place.
Thirty and Maryville Road, that's a good one.
Yep.
Come across that.
Yeah, they had lights out all up and down Broadway.
And I got your email about power outages. I understand we got power outages, but as I said to Jean and Joe before the meeting, some of these intersections are high-profile intersections. Thirty and Broadway was identified as the most dangerous intersection in the state, and NDOT's not out there responding to those signals or at least putting up stop signs, Joe. Come on, I mean, that's ridiculous. So, public safety, public works for whatever it's worth.
Okay, I have one thing under public safety. You know, we've, again, with the power outages, we have been experiencing many power outages in our own homes. As the heat increases, the heat in the homes get higher and higher each day without any cooling except for the night cooling. Um, Bruce Fiers and I had a little meeting before this. We want to open up the town hall as a cooling center for anyone that needs it to get out of the heat, to come into another place where there's light, power and people. Um, the cooling center will be open until ten o'clock P.M., and Chief, if someone does need it, I'm sure they will call dispatch. Can you please?
I already, I already advised dispatch this morning.
Okay, very good.
They need a cooling, they can come to town hall.
Right, and could you also please give them my name and my phone number if needed? I will come in and I will open up the, uh, the town hall for these people to cool down.
The only problem we have with the town hall, if there's a power outage here at the town hall.
Well, right, we can't help that. Right, exactly. But I know there's power outages throughout our town, and so far, this area has not been affected, thank God, yet. We don't know what tomorrow's going to bring with the weather.
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, for, it'll be a cooling center till ten o'clock at night as needed, except when the power goes out of the town, and the, uh, the chief will notify dispatchers to give me a call, and I will come in and open up. Okay. Anything else under public safety? Seeing on Parkston Recreation, Councilman Span?
Uh, I think the parade is coming along fine. I, I really don't know the.
Have you communicated with, uh?
Not just that one meeting.
Okay.
I think it's coming along fine.
Okay, we have been getting quite a bit of entries, um, in it, uh, quite a bit, and I just want to state, Laurie, you're sitting out there in the audience, I thank you so much for all your assistance, for all your help. She's the lady who's getting us the rail cats among several other entries, and I do appreciate that, and I do thank you. Environmental affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
I'll defer to Matt Lee, please.
Um, last Friday and Saturday, we planted what I'm calling the largest rain garden in the state of Indiana at Fifty-fourth Court. Uh, we had some really great volunteers out there helping, uh, plant all the native plants that we had, uh, including John Arneson, he's the, uh, President of our Environmental Resource Committee, and Dorinda and her daughter Beth, so, uh, thanks, everybody who came out, and Councilman Hardaway was out there, so, um, thanks for, for your support and that. I took some final photos to send for the Great Lakes, uh, Green Streets Guidebook, so, um, so that'll be out at some point, and I'll share that with you when, uh, the final publication is out. Um, we're investigating some improvements, uh, for Fifty-third Court, uh, it's off of Pier Street. Uh, there's about nine acres we're looking to utilize for, uh, better utilize for detention in that particular area. Um, Robinson Engineering has all the topo data complete for Southmore Park, and they're using that for the, uh, the new drainage plans for the entire subdivision, so, um, so that's, that's in the works there. Um, our jet bag truck is still in Sedona, they had to jump around a few other sites, but, uh, they're primarily working in Sedona at the moment. Uh, we're also looking at some drainage improvements around the Cloister Apartments. That's where Jefferson Street dead ends, it would be about Fifty-Ninth Avenue somewhere in there, so we're looking at some, uh, some alternative drainage options to alleviate the flooding that occurs over there. Um, the plans for the new stormwater building are out for bid, uh, the bid opening will be on July ninth. Um, we have a final draft, and we had our stormwater brochures printed for the latest one I shared with you last time, so these are all out. They'll be at, um, various departments, we've got the area over here where we put up all of our brochures so people can come and, uh, take those so that, um, they're a little bit more aware of what they can do in terms of lawn care and how that relates to stormwater management. Um, I have, you know, Christopher Burke tomorrow, we go on our stormwater master plan and updates with that. Uh, I attended a D and R Flood Plan Management Workshop in Dyer, and, um, it was pretty interesting, some of the information they had with regards to the flood insurance and mapping and how that program is managed, as well as the post, uh, post-disaster preparedness, which is something we got to kind of beef up on our end when it comes to, um, to flood response. Uh, I got a date with Christina Groves, not a date, but, you know, uh, from FEMA, um, July twenty-ninth, uh, she's going to meet with me, and we're going to go through our program as part of the CRS application. Um, NERC is hosting a workshop on July seventeenth, the focus on construction site and stormwater runoff controls. I'll be one of three speakers for this workshop, and that's, that's all, yeah.
I got a couple things there, Madam Chair. Um, first thing is to piggyback off what Matt said about the rain garden, I encourage everyone to come out there, take a look at it, it's great.
I did.
Did you?
Yes.
Thank you, and it, it does, it enhances that neighborhood and it enhances the entire town of Maryville. And so I think, I'd encourage people to see that. And the second thing, uh, we are, we want to get a couple of recyclable benches out there. And I spoke with Jeff Lehman from, uh.
Save your caps.
Huh?
Save your caps.
From Solid Waste, yeah. And we're going to start Monday with a cap-a-thon here in town hall, where any type, any type of cap, plastic cap off of bottles, aerosol cans or whatever, we need to get eight hundred pounds of caps.
I would have a challenge through the schools to see who can collect the most caps.
To who?
The schools.
Well, yeah, but that's not going to happen in jail.
Schools is, uh, collecting caps to put two benches at the, uh.
But they still could do it.
High school.
Well, we, but we, here in the town, we need to challenge the neighbors, the community, to bring their caps here, and we'll get a couple of, because Solid Waste, what they do is the benches are two hundred dollars, uh, six hundred dollars apiece, and the, the four hundred pounds of caps take care of four hundred dollars of it, and then Solid Waste is willing to pay the two hundred dollars for the, for the benches. So we're going to roll that out next Monday. Uh, we'll have a container here, Stacy out of Bruce's office, I spoke with her today, she's going to be our point person, so that if, you know, to just kind of like to say that, you know, this can go in it, but this can't go in it, that type, that's like, that sort of thing, but I encourage all of us, uh, here in the town to bring, save your caps and bring them.
I got a couple bags.
And, uh, we could, uh, you know, talk to you, talk to the churches, I'll talk to my church and places so that we can, uh, make this thing happen.
Now, you just, just plastic, not, not metal caps?
Just plastic.
Plastic.
Just plastic.
Recycle.
Yep, any, any plastic, yep. Thank, thank you.
I didn't knew about that.
Huh?
We've been doing that through Crown Point for about two months now.
Best kept secret, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Madam.
You're quite welcome. Anything else other environmental affairs? Elections and public relations, I just want to remind everyone of our, uh, July, our Fourth of July Parade, the Penne State Parade will be held on July third. The parade starts at seven o'clock P.M., the lineup is at five-thirty at Geisen Funeral Home. Also, we used to have two entrances. We would have the one on Broadway and the one on Eightieth. The one on Broadway entrance, that will be shut down, that will be closed off, the Eightieth entrance to Geisen. Everyone will come up on Eightieth and then go through the, through the line of procedures, okay? And also on August sixth, we're going to have a national lights out from six to eight P.M. We'll have more on that as a later date. And that's all that I have. Economic development?
Got, um, something under, uh, public relations. I don't know if, uh, this is putting everybody's package, but Haley Perriman is doing her sixth annual, uh, Kool-Aid for Riley's. It'll be from July eighth through July twelfth at, uh, Maryville Fire Station Number Two, seventy-nine oh five Taft Street. Having already surpassed the twenty thousand dollar mark in the last five years, reaching about twenty, twenty-two thousand, I'm at it again, helping the families and childrens who rely on Riley's Hospital for Children. Their care is very important to me. Please come out one day during the week-long fundraiser and make a donation, every little bit helps. There's a lot going on, and many souvenirs hope to see you there.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Glad you reminded me of that.
So if anybody can, uh, come out and support her.
Economic development, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Utility liaisons, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Under town government reorganization, I do not have nothing at this time, but perhaps at the next council meeting, we will have quite a bit. Eight-day compliance, I do not have, no report. At this time, we have a very, very special guest in our audience, and I would like to have him come up, State Representative, Dr. Vernon Smith. He will be giving us a report on what is going on down in Indianapolis and how it affects our area and the area that the doctor represents. Thank you so much for coming.
Well, thank you. I didn't, uh, proceed according to protocol and to ask you to be able to do this, so I, I hope that you will bear with me, but I want.
We're always welcome, sir, always welcome.
But I wanted to come and to be accountable. Uh, this community was very kind to me, uh, many of the people who voted for me did not know me, they may have known of me, but they didn't know me, and I got overwhelming support from, uh, this great town, and I feel that I'm accountable to you, and I want to earn the support, uh, that was given to me freely, but I want to earn it. That's why I'm here to, to make a report to you. Um, we had a very trying session, uh, during this year, which has been the case the last three years, uh, and, uh, and as you may be aware, you had asked me to carry some legislation. I did my very best with that legislation, but of course, as you know, uh, even though we tried several strategies, we did not get the legislation heard. Uh, however, one of the bills that you wanted did become reality, it was a part of House, Senate Bill, uh, five eighty-five, which of course lifted the caps, which will give some relief to this town as well as to, uh, all of Lake County. Uh, I just wanted to come, and, uh, I know when we're in session, and we're finished with session now, we're in the phase where we are doing study committees, and, uh, we're studying at this time, one committee that I'm studying is what happened with the, uh, the I-Step testing and all the breakdowns there. Uh, but, uh, basically, because I'm the ranking member, uh, Democratic member for, uh, education, most of my study committees are dealing with that topic. Uh, other topics are being explored by other persons from this, from this area. Wanted to bring, and I'll leave it here, I want to distribute it, but I wanted to bring some handouts, because when we're in session, uh, the newspaper, I think, tries to cover what we're doing, but you really, there's so many bills going through, hopping through the process, you may not know what's going on. And, and you may see this as just filler, and you may want to toss it, uh, at the government's expense, you can throw it away, uh, but I thought I would have these printed up and brought to you. This blue handout will be on educational matters, so if you're interested in the topic of education, you can see the bills that we passed on this last session that dealt with the education. You concerned about health, uh, then you'll, you'll have this publication here, uh, criminal laws, civil laws that we passed, and there was a lot of that, uh, we have a publication on that, and, uh, legislation that we passed dealing with senior citizens and their interests, uh, we have that handout, and this is all of the legislation that was enacted for this session. So I'll leave these copies here for you, there are ten copies, enough for all of you, and a few for your, for your file, uh, and I just wanted to let you know that it's such a, uh, humbling experience to, to represent this area and to know how you supported me, and I just, and I just say thank you. Uh, if any of you ever need me, you know, call me, I do return phone calls, uh, and, uh, that's your service.
We thank you so much for coming in, Doctor. We do appreciate it, and we're looking forward to, uh, for you being into our July third parade. I have your applications, yes.
I'm doing some consulting work with the Gary Schools, and we're going to a model schools conference in, uh, Washington, D.C., and I wasn't supposed to get back until the late that night, but I cut a day off and I will be here for that parade, okay?
We thank you. We, we thank you so much, and, and also, of course, like I mentioned before to you, the children of your church is always welcome to join you and us in that day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for stopping by.
Always be blessed, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances, verse readings, ordinance thirteen dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established zone classification A dash one, agricultural zoning district to.
that handout. And this is all of the legislation that was enacted for this session. So I'll leave these copies here for you. There are 10 copies, enough for all of you, and a few for your file. And I just wanted to let you know that it's such an umbling experience to represent this area and to know how you supported me. And I just, in fact, say thank you. If any of you ever need me, you know, call me. I do return phone calls. And that's your service.
We thank you so much for coming in, Doctor. We do appreciate it. And we're looking forward for you being into our July 3rd parade. I have your applications, yes.
I'm doing some consulting work with the Gary Schools, and we're going to Model Schools Conference in Washington, DC. And I wasn't supposed to get back until late that night, but I cut a day off, and I will be here for that parade, okay?
We thank you. We thank you so much. And also, of course, like I mentioned before to you, the children of your church is always welcome to join you and us in that day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for stopping by. Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances. First readings. Ordnance 13-23, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established zone classification A-1, Agricultural Zoning District, to C-2, Community Commercial Zoning District on the undeveloped property of Edna, Robert, and Gerald Loopke, to be known as Mainstream Property Group LLC, MS Maryville LLC, on approximately 11.3 acres more or less. This is going to be for a proposed skilled nursing assisted living facility. And what I've seen, the plans is going to be phenomenal, and it's gonna be beautiful.
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Don Span. Roll call, Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance 13-24, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Park's Non-Reverting Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2013, not included in the current budget, for a total of $8,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Roll call, Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Second readings, ordinance 13-20, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within certain categories. This is to transfer certain monies from the categories of the general fund for a decrease of $132,859, an increase of $132,859.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Do we have any public comment? Any public comments? Any public comment? Not seeing any public comment. Roll call, Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes. Did we have public comment? There was somebody that had a hand raised. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I don't have a sheet here, so I don't know exactly where you're at.
She's thinking that this is public comment.
Yeah, ma'am, this is not public comment. This is for second readings on ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, I will call you in public comment. Thank you. Ordnance 13-21, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, designating an economic development target area, to designate economic development areas upon recommendation by an Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any public comment on this one? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Roll call, Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
Madam Chairman, I think that we need to vote on the last one that we did before this, because we called for roll call, and I don't think we took a vote on that.
I am so sorry. You're correct, Councilman Garalcheck. Going back to ordinance 13-20, we did have a motion and a second.
Right, we just need a roll call.
We do not have the roll call. So Mr. Ernstie, please do a roll call on ordinance 13-20.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to Resolution 13-12. This motion was tabled at our June 11th meeting, and I would just like to read this for clarification, okay? When the town takes out a new bond, repayments are usually done semi-annually in January and July. If the specific fund does not have sufficient monies to cover the payment due to late property tax distribution and so on, a temporary inter-fund borrowing is done so the payment can be made. This inter-fund loan must be repaid within six months. If that is not possible, an extension can be made up to one year from inception. These guidelines are implemented by the State Board of Accounts when they do our annual audit. Since resolutions must be passed by the Town Council for these scenarios, three of them were done on June 11th, 2013 Town Council Meeting. One, extension of loans until December 31st, 2013, for those done in January 2013. Two, repayment of loans that have reached their one-year time limit. Three, new loans to replace the ones repaid in number two. Only numbers one and two were passed on June 11th, 2013. Number three, this Resolution 13-12 was tabled, but now must be passed at our June 25th meeting. As an added note, these particular loans will be resolved with the 2014 budget submission. This has to be passed or passed this evening to avoid any State Board of Accounts audits.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Again, this is a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing temporary loans to fulfill monetary requirements to accommodate shortfalls, for a decrease of $21,000, an increase of $21,000. And let's see, we will do a roll call.
It's a voice vote.
A voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes five to one. Motion 13-15, confirmatory resolution of the Town Council, of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, designating an economic revitalization area. We are going to open this up for a public hearing. Do I have any comments? Any public comments? Any comments? Okay, not seeing any. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call vote. Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. We have a Resolution 13-16, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, approving an order of the Town of Maryville Plan Commission, approving an amendment to an economic development plan previously adopted by the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission, designates and declares an area within the Town of Maryville, Indiana, to be an economic development area within the meaning of Indiana Code 36-7-14 as amended, designated the original area as an allocation area for purposes of Section 39 of the Act, and approved an economic development plan for the original area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call, Mr. Ernstie.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. BZA action, the following has withdrew his petition. Petitioner was Terry Joy Jr., owner CPT REO LLC. He requested a special exception approval on .93 acres for an automotive repair facility located at 700 West 84th Drive, zoning was C-3 Highway Commercial, case number Z13E3-0413. He submitted a following letter to our zoning director, Dorinda Gregor. "I am writing to inform you that I am withdrawing my bid for a special exception on the property located at 700 West 84th Drive in Maryville. We were turned down by the BZA, and we will not be continuing the process with the City Council."
Motion to accept the withdrawal, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye carries for withdrawal. Our next petitioner, Main Street Properties Group LLC, is the petitioners here. Could you please step up, please? Okay, the owner is Edna, Robert, and Gerald Loopke. Special exemption approval on approximately 11.3 acres, plus or minus. The purpose is for a skilled nursing and assisted living facility. The location, 171 East 93rd Avenue. Zoning is C-2 Community Commercial, case number Z19E50513. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
How you doing?
We're fine, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Town Council. For the record, my name is Michael Klingel. I'm with the firm of Greenberg Farrow. Our offices reside at 21 South Evergreen Avenue in Arlington Heights, Illinois. And I am here this evening as a representative of Main Street. Just to give you a little background of Main Street. Main Street was founded in 2002. The executive team there identified a need for a higher standard of care. The facilities that are currently in the market, baby boomers are much more desirous of a higher standard of living and living experience. Recent AARP poll, when baby boomers were petitioned, asked whether or not they would use some of the current facilities out there. Or was only 90% of them said no, that they would not, that it was not up to the standard that they are used to living, and they would not like to reduce their standard of living when they would have to use a facility. So the senior management team developed their trademark next-generation facility, which we are happy to bring to Maryville. This facility will engage 10 to 15 designated locations and destination locations within the facility. These destinations being a theater, a pub area, community development or community gathering area, two restaurants with sit-down and order-off-the-menu restaurants, physical therapy facilities within the, inside the building, as well as an outside area for exterior rehabilitation. The facility we are proposing is 66,000 square foot, single-story facility. The beds will be, will count will be 100, of which generally, they split 30% assisted living and 70% skilled nursing. The main idea for this facility is to provide people with a rehabilitation area outside of the hospital environment. With this next-generation facility, it has been proven that there are quicker rehab times and less times where people are ending up back in the hospital again. And this primarily is because of the activity level that people experience here, opposed to the current, many of the current facilities that were in-room-only treatment there. They live there, they spend most of their time there. This facility is going to bring 300 temporary jobs during construction, 100-plus permanent jobs, and these aren't gonna be boat-paying jobs, these are gonna be skilled nursing jobs, these are gonna be administrative jobs, there are going to be restaurant facility jobs, maintenance, those type of jobs. The facility is gonna be staffed 24/7. And so, from the standpoint of, just to give you an idea, the operators of Main Street facilities generally pay between 5% and 10% higher than what, you can get the same position outside of the Main Street facility. The property is located at the southwest corner of Broadway and 93rd Avenue. As I indicated, it's about 10 acres of land. We have all of the utilities available to us along 93rd Street, water, gas, and electric. Sanitary, we do have to extend about 200 feet from the west to our west property boundary, although there is a large storm sewer pipe that runs along the west property line, so we will have to be providing a pump station for sanitary from the building to that property line. The extension would be 200 feet beyond there to get to the gravity system. Storm sewers will be, storm facilities will be provided in the northwest corner of the property, as well as the, along the south property line. And these will be interconnected. Basically, the property is gonna be divided in half. North half is going to the north pond, south half is going to the south pond. They will dispense, or they will exit, or daylight into the detention basin, just directly west of our property. It's, I believe it's a municipal detention facility, and then continue downstream to the, to south, properties to the south. Based on the facilities available to us at 93rd Street, as well as the utilities, I believe that we have met all of the findings of fact that you guys place forward, that the project needs to meet in order to be granted the special exception. And so I ask you, we also been before the ZBA, and the ZBA has recommended unanimously to approve this. And for those reasons, I look for positive findings from this board this evening. And I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Any questions, anyone? I have, I was at the first meeting with Councilman Pettit, and I was very amazed at what you are coming to our town and what you are offering. It's a beautiful, it's beautiful. If it is as nice as it, the pictures show.
What it is. Madam President, gives me great joy that you guys are coming into Amerplex. This was the one parcel that was outside of Amerplex, ironically. The Loopkeys did not sell the Purdue. But as you said, we met with them, they've been with Don and I at Plan Commission. I'm very excited about this, Michael, for that area. Just keep in mind, drainage is a concern down there, right, Mr. Barrier?
So.
With that said, Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the case number Z19ES-0513.
Second.
I have a question. You said that you're gonna use skilled people to work inside the place.
Correct.
And how's it gonna be built with skilled labor too?
Yes, Ton and Blank is our general contractor, and they will be facilitating the construction of the building up here.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Welcome.
Welcome to the town, Michael.
Madam President, appreciate it.
Next, we have petitioner Landmark Sign Group. The owner, Diceys of Gary and Drayton High School, for variance of use approval in an R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, for a proposed electronic message center sign, location at 5959 Broadway, zoning is R-2 Single Family Residential, case Z20UV6-0513. Time out. Time out.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in business. Do I hear a, this is also for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. All other sign code requirements will have to be met. Is the petitioner, is the petitioner here? Please come up, sir.
Well, he's coming, Madam President. Motion to approve.
There we go.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Hardaway.
Oh, no, you're not getting away that easy.
Come on, Larry.
It's not that easy.
You know, those of us that are gonna be paying tuition there, wanna make sure you're...
That's right, we wanna make sure that we get our money's worth from you.
We're getting our money's worth. He's, Larry's the one that's designed our sign for us, for both of the signs out front.
Where's our sign out front, Larry? Did you bring it with you?
No, we left it at the shop. We're getting closer, though.
When will it be installed? Tomorrow?
No, we're looking toward mid-July.
Very good. Okay, let's show us what you have here, there.
What we have here for Andrayton is to remove the existing monument sign that is currently on-site and replace it with a new... that is currently on-site and replace it with a new freestanding sign with an electronic message center to replace the current manual marquee that they currently have. Straightforward.
Basically like Maryville High Schools, different design.
And will you be allowing us to use that for any of our advertisement spaces from the Town of Maryville?
Yes.
Very good.
They have to, don't they, by ordinance, Dorinda, the on-premise electronics have to promote?
I'm just messing with them, that's all, giving them a hard time.
The gala's coming up in November, Larry.
Got you.
Chamber.
Okay, do we have any other questions? All right, we had a motion by Councilman Hardaway, and we had a second and by...
No, thank you, Chrissy.
Okay, by Councilwoman Barron. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Thank you. Do we have any new business? Any new business?
Bruce, are you in that special council meeting for the awarding? Are you ready to know about that?
Taking care of that. Seeing no new business. I'm sorry, I just skipped over old business. We have any old business? No old business, no new business, right? Very good, any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, welcome George, come on up.
George, how are you feeling?
Quite good, actually.
Good.
I'm still walking and talking.
Very good.
I'm George Rogge, and I'm so fortunate to be the second owner of the Boyd home on I-65 and the old Lincoln Highway. And this Friday, I'm going to have an event there. I teamed up with Indiana Landmarks Foundation, because they have, for years, wanted to come into the house, and so have a lot of people. And I thought, well, shoot, this is the time to do it, because it's the 100th year of the Lincoln Highway, which I think is the most important thing that happened to Maryville. And actually, my insurance family, we're 90 years insuring cars and homes on Lincoln Highway. So, this Friday, I'm going to have, through them, it's kind of their membership drive-type thing. It's, it's, so they're charging, I'm paying, that type of thing. I mean, the people are going to pay for their membership-type stuff. And I'm providing the dinner, and drinks, and tours. And it'll be four of the relatives coming from all parts of the country that are part of the Boyd family. So, I'm anxious to meet them, because I've only met one. And then, on Thursday, you probably read in the newspaper, the Indiana Lincoln Highway Association, which I'm a member of, is going, the cars that are coming from the east coast are coming through in the afternoon on the Lincoln Highway. All, and they're staggered, and they're going to end up in dire. Well, I, there's, they're putting out a flyer that they could stop at the Boyd house, and I'll have water for them, and if they want to go through the house, that's fine. So, it's two big days, and I've been cleaning up around the place.
Yes, I have. I drive by it every day.
Man, I've been cleaning it for a month. And so, I, I, all this legislation here just makes me, my heart beat. I wish I was there. Anyway, I have some brochures from Indiana Landmarks, and I'll leave it up here. Here, and I hope to see you.
What time Friday, George?
Oh, Friday is four to eight.
Thank you.
And you say Thursday, you're going to have the house open too?
Sure.
Okay.
Afternoon.
Okay, afternoon, Thursday afternoon?
Yeah.
After four?
No, that's way afternoon. No, I think we'll be there about one through, we see 70 cars, and then we'll quit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Very good, and I thank you very much. And as I said in a previous meeting, Dorinda Gregor, Dorinda will be taking my place over there, because I will be out of town. Any other one, Judge? Come up and state your name and your address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Judge Dina Jones, and I am currently going to give my marital address, 78 20 Broadway. And I'd like to just clarify a couple of things that came across the board meeting in June, I think it was June 11. There were some questions regarding ordinance violations, specifically noxious weeds. And since I wasn't here, nor my representatives, I figured I would come and further inform the board, if you don't mind. I'd like to start by saying that we've had 12 tickets written this year. Now, it's been kind of cold, so there hasn't been a need for grass cutting. And the first four tickets were June 17, and the second eight tickets will be heard on July 15. So, there hadn't been any to discuss up until this point. The four that were already, had come to pass, two paid, one failed to appear, and one I never received. So, it wasn't actually filed. And just for clarification purposes, the way these things happen, the ordinance compliance officer goes out, writes the ticket, and then she files it with us. We file it, we give it a court date. We usually put it on the court date that the ordinance officer appears, which is always the third Monday. And if the person pleads not guilty, then it's set for trial. They're also given the opportunity to come into compliance during that timeframe. All of these things are offered by your town attorney. I don't get to talk during that time, because it's either guilty or not guilty. If they plead guilty at that time, I do ask them, do they want an opportunity to come into compliance before I accept their guilty plea? And since they've already entered a guilty plea, I just hold it for 30 days. They come back in, and if they are in compliance, then the town attorney will either move to dismiss or move for a fine. I don't get to arbitrarily dismiss things. So, any dismissals have to be by motion of the town attorney. So, I don't just dismiss, 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 that the town attorney, and, and further explanation. I don't, I just want to say that it's, it's difficult for a judge to take instruction from a board, because that would be unethical. So, I can't be told how to rule. However, if there is something that you wish to have brought before me as far as what you would like to see happen, the town attorney would be the person to make that argument to me. And of course, I am all ears. I'm very open to argument. But I can't just say, well, I'm going to rule this way, because I have big people downstate that watch those things. So, I'm not trying to lose my license for anyone.
But, so your judge, remember, keep in mind, and this is one thought I tried to, I think, leave on my message to you. And I think, I speak for myself, I think I speak for the seven of us, because you are elected, as is Jean and the seven of us, by the taxpayers. Those taxpayers are not going to call you. Maybe they might call Jean. They're going to call Chrissy, and me, and Tom, and Rich, and Don, and Ron, and say, such and such address isn't getting cut, and this is the second time the violation, and this and that, why isn't the town doing something? We are the ones that pass the ordinance. You're absolutely right, Madam President. Maybe we need to have a conversation with Rich, or with Mr. Deppi, and say, these have to be enforced to the letter of the ordinance. As Mr. Petrus used to say, why pass an ordinance if it's not going to be enforced? Your dad always used to tell me that, Joe when I was town manager. If you're, if we're not going to enforce it, and the message isn't getting to you, then these folks are going to come up in the audience, and they're going to complain to us as the council. They're not going to call your office. They may call Jean's office. They'll probably call Dorinda's office. You know, that's who we, you know, as Rich alluded to in the beginning of the meeting, the taxpayers pay all of our paychecks. And we're all elected by them, so we got to work together. So, if my comments came off the wrong way, Gina, I apologize. But at the same time, I've got to take care of the residents of Ward 6, Chrissy's got to worry about Ward 5, and so on down the line. So, and you're elected townwide. So, you know, just something to think about, you know, as we, we process these things through. If there's a breakdown as to what the attorney's doing in court, maybe we need to have that discussion as well.
But then she said right here that only four tickets have come through. So, one pled guilty, and the other one never came through, and...
Well, yeah, that's concerning that one never came through, Tom. I wonder what happened with, I mean, when you say never came through, Gina, is that from?
Process.
The code officer?
Yes. That means I never got it.
You never got the ticket in court, okay.
I think, I think what the problem is, I think the ordinance is so, the fine is so small.
But then again, I mean, but, but you got to look at it this way. It's a 15-day process that we have to go through. And then by the time she writes the ticket, by the time it goes through the courts, you're talking 45 days.
Well, and it's, I'm wondering, and we've gone through this, Rich, when, when Mr. Bauer was our attorney through Council Affairs. I don't know if we want to look at the noxious weed ordinance again, and try and, you know, through Council, through Council Affairs, Don, you know, bring the ordinance back up for review, and see what we can do to tweak it, I don't know.
I think we can critique it.
It needs to be tweaked in two areas. The length of ti, the length of time that it takes to go through the process. And I think that right now, the length of the grass is eight inches or something like, totally too hot. That's totally not, it's out of whack. Because I, you know, by the time that happens, and then you got to go through this 45-day thing, then the grass is a foot tall.
And then how many times do we got to contact that person?
Right. And, you know...
The same person over and over and over and over and over again?
I just think that, you know, we need to have something in place where if, you know, especially if the house is vacant. And, you know, even if there's somebody to contact, that's a realtor or whatever, we need to do whatever we need to do to maintain integrity of our neighborhoods, and then just send them a bill and put a lien on the property. Because there's far too many empty houses, and...
The stuff.
We're aggravating ourselves, and Vicki's only one person.
Yep.
And by the time she goes from 53rd Avenue all the way out to 101st, she wore out.
Just so you know, too, for things that the bank owns, you can't go onto those properties to cut the grass. So, you can't send the ordinance person to go cut it, and then bill the bank, because you can't go onto the property. So, some of those...
But then we have to go through the process then. But after we go through the process, then we, can we go? Thank you, okay. Well, then we have to, we have to shorten that time.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure most of the council people here have attended your court when you were in charge.
Not everybody.
No? Well, I know I have.
All visitors are welcome.
There you go. And you do, in my eyes, Judge, you do a phenomenal job. I don't, I would never want to walk one block in your shoes. What I saw, and what I witnessed, and what you had to put up with.
You came on a bad day.
I came on a very bad day. Yes, there was. Yes, there was. Judge, I thank you very much for your clarification.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks.
Anyone else under public comment? Please come up, ma'am. State your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Maybe I should have come up before the judge came up. But I, my concern was, I was here two weeks ago.
Yes, you were.
About the property 6397 Marshall Court. And I was told it would be 15 days before that grass in the backyard was cut. Well, it hasn't been cut yet. This is, I think, day 14. And I'm hearing from you that it takes sometimes up to 45 days? I've got pictures. That grass is like three feet tall. And it not only affects me, but it affects five other taxpayers. And they're complaining, and of course, I'm the point man, so I come up to the meeting to let you all know about it. So, I'd like to get some feedback on what's being done, or what has been done.
Okay, I'm sure if you would contact Dorinda's office.
It has been turned into the code enforcement officer. Once again, she has to go through the process of contacting the owner, telling them, you know, what there is a warning on. They need to maintain the property, and if they don't...
Is it bank-owned?
I'm not pushing. I'm not...
It's an empty house, right?
It's empty, yes.
It's in foreclosure. So, it's just tracking down who actually really owns it right now, because it's in the middle of the process. They've lost the home. The bank is taking over it. So, it's going to, it's going, that process does take a little bit of time. It's not done overnight.
Okay, in 45 days, the grass is going to, you're not going to be able to see the house.
Well, once, once the owner is found, then it's easier. But when it's in a transition like this, if they don't own it, they don't own it yet. So, there is nobody to get. You can tell them all day long, you need to mow that grass, but they don't own it anymore, and they don't, they haven't come upon it yet. So, nobody's going to go on that property. Until it's done. And it's close, but it's not done yet. But as soon as it's done...
Look at another 30 days?
I would say probably maybe, maybe six, seven days.
Here's what you do, ma'am. How about meeting with Mr. Span after the meeting, and have a conversation with him? And he'll give you some assurances.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else under public comment? Any public comments? Seeing no more public comment announcements. We will have a special council meeting at 12 o'clock on July 2nd. Okay, this is going to be awarding the bid project for the 77th Street by SOC School. BZA meeting, June 26th at 6:30 PM. Plant Commission Workshop, July 2nd at 6:30 PM. Town Council meeting, July 9th at 6:30 PM. Public Works meeting at 5 o'clock PM on, on July 9th to discuss the road paving. We will have a personnel executive meeting to be announced. Also, all town offices, with the exception of the emergency services, will be closed Thursday, July 4th, and Friday, July 5th, in observance of the July 4th. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Adjourned.